Look, the neighborhood. Hi, it's your chair. And there's Ann. Yep. So yeah, we just gotta sort out who's in. Now, it's. Yeah, just. I have no idea how many people are coming, so. Yeah, wherever. We're gonna try to inject this stuff up on the screen. And so we can see it in real time, but I have a hard copy here. This is a copy of the final draft. Oddly enough, I don't know if it's a political statement or not, but my computer only printed out in blue and yellow, as in. Let's let's stop the damn war. Okay. And Cravens coming in now. We can't hear anybody else is the problem. Liz, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yep. So you are coming through. And Dayton is coming in. And are we echoing?
No.
A little bit, but not bad.
All right. That's. Hi, Ann.
Oh, Town of Glover has an owl. That's cool.
Hi, Dayton.
Hello, everyone. How do we do?
Good.
Good.
Um, well. And we even have, we even have some, uh, neighborhood. Joining us. I need to turn my volume back down. I'm sorry. We're testing the system. First time to do. So I could put those.
What is that? What is the screen you've got going?
Yeah, see, Steve, we can't, we can barely hear you guys.
That's good, probably for me.
No comment.
No comment accepted.
All right, but we're trying to get our audio set up here. We're using the new rejection system in the town hall and. The audio is, uh.
You do have a little echo.
We're getting some echo here, so we're trying.
Little, little, much less than before.
All right, that's good. All right, say something, Steve.
Hi, Randy. I'll stop talking when you tell me to stop talking because I'd just like to talk.
That's, that's good enough right there. We heard, we hear you loud and clear. And we. Yes, that's a little sound test.
Moses supposes his toeses are roses, but Moses supposes erroneously.
Hey, you got little ones.
Oh, yeah, this is Gabe. Gabe, say hi.
I'm gonna turn that speaker.
That's how you get them to be quiet. You ask them to say.
We turn that one on.
You don't hear people.
Hi, Liz.
See?
Hi, Steve.
Waiting for the meeting to kind of get, get started. They're working out technical difficulties. Sometimes.
We have people coming in.
You guys need to let me have my meeting, okay? And you can stay here. We need to be quiet.
Good, there's Adam. Carmella. All right.
We'll have them moving camera over there so I can see everyone in the room because there's a few people in this room.
Dayton, we've set up this new system of centralized camera. It's called an owl. And it switches to whoever in the room is talking.
So it's a great, it's a great tool.
It's also, it's also got you on a screen. I wonder if that's where the echo is.
Yeah, because if you're, you've got like two Town of Glover's up. If you somehow are able to remove the non-owl webcam that you're on. That will remove the crossfeed and then the owl's doing it now, and that's much better.
Say something, Randy.
Yeah, I, I muted my video as well as my audio mic. Good? Is that better?
Perfect.
Right. And we can see everybody on the big screen even.
It's still a little echoey.
Is your mic on? No, I'm muted both video and audio.
I think that's just the room. It sounds just like a regular select board meeting.
You need more quotes, more quotes.
All right. Okay. Oh. Uh, let's see here. I think we're. Everybody, anybody else wants to come in, I'll let them in. Why don't we get started? Five after. Thank everybody for coming and I would like for the. Uh, community members to introduce themselves too.
Okay. So Brooks, first member, John Curry.
Very good. Okay, so just as an introduction here and then Dayton, I'll, I'll turn it over to you and you can call up. Your draft and we'll discuss it, but just to let everybody know, this is a presentation of. Uh, what we hope is the final draft of the municipal planning grant plan that we have been working on for the last year, year and a half. And, um. Again, we have tried to collect. Suggestions, ideas from as broad a community base as we could get. And, uh, still, I know we didn't reach everybody, but we, we made an attempt and, um. So what you need to think in this in terms of is that these are. Ideas that have been put on the table as for consideration that we will be looking at. For the next. Year to five, 10 years, ideas that can really, really, uh, help. Upgrade the downtown, make it more, more, um, beautification, uh, as well as functionality. Uh, both on Main Street here and especially around the town ring. We've spent a lot of time. With getting those kinds of ideas as well to make it more usable even year round. So, but. Keep in mind that these are just ideas. It doesn't mean just because it's in the plan that we are going to take off and do every one of these things. They're all still subject to discussion and. Alteration down the line. So keep that in mind as we go through all this. Anybody else have any comments that, uh, that I didn't cover there?
I, I guess I'd, I'd just like to say, um, that if any of the ideas are particularly appealing. Uh, that, uh, let, let Randy know that you're interested in, in spearheading. An aspect of the project. So yes, nothing's gonna happen right away and there'll be discussion, but we're certainly looking for people, more people to. Get involved in bringing this to more of an implementation mode.
Right. Good. Anyone else? Okay, well, Dayton, why don't I turn, turn the controls over to you?
Sure, and I'm happy to take it. I, I wasn't necessarily coming in anticipating presenting the whole plan and I, I'm happy to kind of give a high level walkthrough. And I think the only other thing that I'd like to point out here is that, you know, the way we really envision these plans working is, and the way I know. Community plans work is that this is hopefully a tool just to launch into your next, you know, one, two, or 20 grant applications, whether that's for improvements. Glover Green or whether that's to improvements to the streetscape. Because what we do in these plans, they're not. Uh, I think a lot like Randy's saying, they're not explicit and saying, you know, this has to have eight parking spots in front of it. That's how it has to be. But they are, but they do point towards, there is a community desire to improve the streetscape with more regular parking. There is a community desire. To make changes to the Glover Green that, that could do these things. And when you want to move forward on any of them. Grant applicant, grant administrators always say, well, what's the plan? Do you have a community plan? And I think. Through this last year's process, we can definitely say Glover's got a plan. And so I'll share this really quickly and we can go through it. You know, my main intent tonight is to capture any, um, final edits. I will. You know, Randy, we can talk about this more or less, but totally my fault for not staying on top of my sub consultants to give me the, the economic summary that will be coming. And we'll take it forward. But if people are, are people able to see the Heart of Glover screen here?
Yeah, and we brought it up on the big screen as well.
Great. So I'm just gonna go through this as a quick, a quick two bit tour and happy to come back to any of it that you'd like. You know, a lot of this plan. For an official plan is documentation of, here's the process, you know, here's these goals we, we established at the beginning that we want this to be a plan that builds better, that plans for the people of Glover. Um, and that thinks big. Here's the process we went.
Would you zoom in a couple of steps so that we can actually see the text a little better?
I'll do my best. Is that a little better?
Yeah.
Okay. So we went through and, you know, the front of this plan just gives the high level documentation of what we studied and it was the, the streetscape, uh, you know, effectively in the village center between the green and red sky trading. Um, and with this, with a special focus on the green, pardon my colleagues in the background. Um, you know, so this is a lot of just sort of analytics of what we see on the ground. Some of the key challenges we identified, you know, traffic calming and, and really making the village feel like a village. Uh, when you have a highway running through it was a, a theme we heard. Multiple times, um, you know, the love for the green, but a desire to see it, um, kind of grow and change was another major theme. Then we just document, you know, anybody saying, well, we'll give you $50,000 of public funds for something new on the green. But how do I know this is actually publicly supported? They look at these pages, right, and try, and try to understand what you did to engage the community. And so we document that, their survey. Results, um, about real preferences towards things. And then we didn't just design, make designs and say, here's your plan. I know how to design, you know, it would, when the public realm. Take it. We, we went through concepts, right? So we developed two distinct concepts for the town green. Went through a public meeting process and a, and a review process after the meeting that had, you know, good, good bit of online input and community conversations with planning commission going around that. We did two street, two concepts for the streetscape that, that looked through, you know, seeing what, what about a sidewalk on both sides? What about a sidewalk mostly on one side? What about bike lanes? What about more parking? What about less parking? We explored all those things in these concepts. And then where we took them from there is just a little bit more refinement and we took what we heard as public voices. Um, and tried to really kind of document and refine that. And that results in not just a plan for the green, but. To trail connections that could extend with the green and have walkable connections into fishing access on Vermont Fish and Wildlife Game. Into a link to the Glover, Glover Community School, maybe eventual river access at the Glover Fire Department. Um, you know, and, and a concept here and it's, you know, it's a, what we'd like, I'd like to call this a pretty picture. It gives people an idea of what could be on Glover Green in the future if it could expand and have river access, you know, if we could have. A little bit more formalized parking than just parking on the grass. If there was, you know, a four season ban shell or, um, or pavilion to, to. Uh, host performances and, and really support the farmer's market. So those types of things, um, are promoted in here and it's not a final design by any stretch of the imagination. It's a. It's, it's a concept. And so same thing with the street concept. We heard kind of public feedback. It said, yeah, the bike lanes aren't quite right for us. Uh, we don't think we need sidewalk on both sides, but we absolutely need a continuous sidewalk and maybe some better linkages at the, uh, northern end of town. And so we combined that into sort of the preferred concept and then really tried to illustrate and I, you know, I'm, I'm proud of our team being able to, to bring this level of detail into a master plan. If you talk to your neighbors. Um, who've done some of these processes before in other towns, it's not all the time that you get actual sort of dimensioned parking spaces out. Out of a master plan process, but we thought it was important to go through. And again, this isn't explicit. You don't take this to go get construction. But it shows what could happen and how, how changes could facilitate a continuous walking connection between the village. And the green where right now we have, we have a parking lot in that connection. Um, then we look, you know, we look at, at the space in front of couriers and there's been some beautiful renovation in front of couriers. Um, we also use this plan to sort of identify that there's, if we're gonna have a direct walking connection. Um, you know, how that connects to the, the courier's market will need to be assessed some more, but there's opportunity for improved parking, more regular parking. Um, not just in front of couriers, but nearby. So we, we put that forward. And then the implementation chapter that we include in this is really what's important at this stage in the plan. You know, we're at, we're at 98% with this plan. And the, and the budget and time we had for it. But here, here the town can really take these, and there's hyperlinks through this. This is designed as a digital document. Welcome to print it, put it on your desk, wallpaper your room. It'll work great that way. Um, but the digital copy works well because you can link directly to, you know, the community assistance specialist when you want to say. All right, we've talked to the fire department. They're open to river access. We want a pathway to have that off the green. But what do we need, who do we need to talk to about permitting? And they can line that up for you. Um, we talk about also just knowing the scale of change for something on a street and saying, we want a new sidewalk construction and new parking. You know, those are very big expensive projects and we recognize and Vtrans recognizes that there's sometimes some great ways to do small. Testing of what if we have parking here? What if a sidewalk extended over on this side? Um, to do these on small scale efforts. And so we walked through a little bit of the demonstration project guidance from the state. Um, and as well as all the implementation pages have an entire suite of relevant.
Dayton, Dayton.
Yes.
Just a second. We're having, we're having a little audio. You were dropping out and, uh, and I were getting feedback. So hold on just a second.
Holding.
All right. Go ahead.
Here I go. Okay, so I'm, I'm at the tail end of it. Hopefully we got through, we got through the meat, but basically pointing out that for each project, like each major project that we identify in this plan, we incorporate. An implementation page that walks you through. Here's some options for short term improvements. Here's long term improvements. Here's relevant grants that are worth researching. There are approximate grant values, people to contact to talk, talk more about it. Um, and find out, you know, about when these things expire and what we can fund with it. So those are just, those are the pieces. That's the implementation page. Um, and what is not pictured and I don't have to hand you yet, but will be coming is really the, the market analysis piece that is the result of. Multiple business, um, surveys and that went out as sort of the initial public engagement phase, really just talk about the, the market climate and trying to. Support and maintain, um, support, maintain and attract businesses, uh, to Glover. So that's my, that's my high level tour and I'm happy to go back to anything that would be useful. And I'm, you know, and I think too, I've mentioned, a last thing I'll mention before I kind of deal the floor here is that, you know, we are effectively 98% of the, of the project at this point, you know, we still have that market analysis delivery to get to you. Um, but what I really like to use this meeting for is, you know, if there's parts of this that particularly those who were involved through the whole process. Parts that went well, I want to hear about them. More importantly, parts that didn't go well, I want to hear about them. And I know Randy gave me a couple of small edits that we'll make sure get back into a final version of this, but any of those. Types of edits that we can incorporate on a final round and make sure you're happy with the product. That's what I want to hear while I'm here tonight too.
Okay, can you hear me as I speak?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so, um, first of all, the, the full document is, can be seen on the town's website. Uh, and you can look at it in great detail and, and give us more feedback about it. Um, and, uh. What else in the, the, um. The other aspects of it, of the, the market analysis and those kinds of things are gonna help us, uh, determine what's feasible as far as, as getting. More businesses in the area, uh, what the, what the possibilities are for that. Lots.
Randy, you had said that it's on the town website. Can you be a little more specific?
Town of Glover, townofglower.com and go to the, uh, planning commission. Uh, there's, uh. I think there's part of Glover. It's a heart, yeah, and there's a, at the top on the extreme right, uh, of the menu, there's the Heart of Glover. That's the sort of the title of the. Of the program that we came up with, the little catchphrase that we came up with. So if you go to that, it'll show you where the draft is and you can, you can look at it and. Make your, make your assessments. And, and then if you have comments. Uh, and please pass it around to anybody else that you know of that might be interested in, in, uh, giving us even more feedback. You can either send them to, uh, Cindy, uh, at the town clerk's office or directly to me. At Glover Planning Commission. At gmail dot com. So.
Randy?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm looking at the Heart of Glover Village Plan and I don't see this plan on it. I don't know if it's just been not downloaded yet. If I look at the Glover, wait a minute, um. It's just, I don't see it anywhere. I mean, all of our minutes and notes and I, I have the minutes, but. I don't see the plan. So that should be fixed. You, I mean, maybe I just don't see it, but I.
And what, well, if you go to the, if you go to the. Town of Glover. Undertakes planning project for town green, uh, that leads you to. Whole list of things. Uh, I don't know why the Heart of Glover aspect of it is not showing up for you, but, uh.
But it, it isn't. I mean, somebody should fix that. That's all. It's not, if it's there, it's really hard to find.
Okay, that's, I think that's a Jethro thing we need to talk to him about. So I'm just looking, so, okay, so planning commission.
So. Right, it's, it's not there, Brian.
Okay, I thought there was also a Heart of Glover, which is right here.
Top, top right corner, uh, of the Town of Glover webpage, you'll see Heart of Glover.
Which also doesn't have the plan.
Next, ARPA Resources, just to the left of ARPA Resources.
But that doesn't have the plan on it either.
No, I, I, I know there's.
I mean, I'm saying that to Brian. I'm saying that to Brian. Anyway, that's fixable for sure.
Well, it is. For some reason, for some reason, um, Cindy or Jessica that, that deals with that, uh, has not put it up yet. Uh, we just got it, uh, a few days ago, but. Uh, we'll make sure that that happens. So for clarification, that would go to Jessica first.
Okay. Okay. For what it's worth for anyone here, I put a direct link to my copy of the plan in the chat that people can access directly if they're curious, but.
Okay.
No, I know it's, I know it's in inboxes and we'll make it to the website soon.
Okay. So, uh, any other questions or comments or?
Well, you have my comment.
I do, I do, and they've been, they've been documented in Phil's as well. And yours are similar to Phil's, I assume, about the side, about the, I mean, two Jays about the sidewalk and.
My, yeah, my concerns were mostly, uh, changes to the road front of, in front of my house.
Yeah.
Uh, I prefer that there weren't any. There are sidewalks across the street. Uh, the parking spaces that are there. They're adequate for, for what they're being used for.
Yeah, our, our, the concern, uh, as we've expressed to, to Jay was that we. With the senior housing, we wanted to give them access to both the, the couriers and.
You know, I lived there for forty some odd years. I see how many people from that, from that house that go by every day. It's like three. And most of them, you know, pack on their wheelchairs. And they aren't gonna use the damn sidewalk and they're gonna wanna get on the curb anyway. So if you wanna put a crosswalk on there at Dexter Mall Road, you know, that makes perfect sense.
I, we got, we got. So.
You, 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 you've been heard. That's good. And, and, uh, again.
We're, we're putting these ideas together and we're, we're not gonna step on your, on your, uh, your, your front yard or, or anything that's gonna. Disrupt what you already have. Although, Phil, did you mention something about that there traditionally was a sidewalk there? No?
On that side of the street?
On that side of the street? No. All right, okay.
Hey, Randy?
Yes.
Just point of clarification, uh, and, and I think it's terminology thing. So, and maybe Dayton can explain it. So he said that this plan's. Uh, not final, but it's a final plan. It's 98%. Um, what, what are the steps for any grievances? I, I'm looking at the iPad and it sounds like there's a couple of people that have grievances with it. What are the steps moving forward, uh, to ensure the grievances and, and work that into the plan?
Right. Well, we would like to refer them as, as additional suggestions rather than grievances, but we understand that, that there are some things that might be. Uh, posted in this, uh, list of ideas that people have objection to and, uh, and. That they should indeed just let me know via email, put it in writing so that, uh, just like you did, Jay. Um, that lets me know specifically what your, your ideas are, what you object to and, um. How we can resolve that issue. We'll, we will not, uh, uh. Disregard what you're, what you're saying. It's just, we, we wanna, we wanna make everybody happy if we can and, but we also want to make. The downtown as, as functional as it is for everybody that, that lives in the area.
Yeah, and what, and what I'd propose, when you're hearing 98%, you know, sadly, the realities of working as a full-time consultant mean that. You know, I have, we have a budget that is allocated to us to work on this project as professionals. We, when I say 98%, you know, that's where we are having moved through the process, the scope, the budget and getting that done. And so my role is definitely diminishing, um, in order to address those grievances. So there's probably at this stage, not as much opportunity for me to go back in. And pull out my pencils and erasers and digital tools and change things. But what I'd recommend for things like this, when. These, these reviews come up later in the process is this is gonna be the planning commission's documents. Not mine. It's the Glover Planning Commissions. And someone should just sort of maybe own a preamble page. It can be always appended and updated. As more community comment comes in and there can be a preamble page to say, this plan was completed from this date to this date. You know, as the, the consultant process was, um, finishing, these comments came to the table and we should make sure to recognize that. Jay doesn't want a sidewalk in front of his house and that, uh, you know, whatever else you hear. Um, and I think that can be a nice way to just append to the front of the plan on your own, you know, even after I'm out of the room.
Okay.
Randy, this is Carmella. Um, how do we let the town as a whole? Know where we are in the process and that, you know, we're still open to suggestions, concerns, recommendations?
Well, uh, that's a real good question. Uh, it's been, it's been one of the hardest things we've done is to get the word out across. The community, uh, as to what is going on and, and how we want them to, uh, give us feedback. Um, so we're, we're really open to suggestions. Of course, we have social media. Uh, we've got the website. We've got Frontwards Forum. Um, uh, but. We do postings at the town clerk's office, uh, but we're open to any other suggestion. Maybe there's something that we haven't thought of that. Will, will really get the word out more, uh, broad brushly to, to the community and, um, and maybe Dayton has some. And um, and maybe Dayton has some perspective on that as well.
You know, I think it's, it's an ongoing, it's, it's always the ongoing challenge in planning to reach the, an entire community and make sure that everyone's involved. I think it's, you know, good communication, regular posted notice. And, you know, I think when you, I think any movement on the plan is when you really want to step up uh, community engagement, right? If you're applying for funding to do a demonstration project, could see what a different parking configuration looks like in the village center. If you're trying to test out a crosswalk, um, if you're looking at funding to go make an improvement to the green or take it to the next step, I think that's when you really just try to ramp up public engagement on all those ways that Randy mentioned. And, and, you know, deliver notice to any affected landowners that are adjacent to anything you're doing. And that's, you do, you do a due diligence effort. I think, sounds like Randy's got a good idea.
One of the terms, one of the terms that Dayton used that was new to me was a demonstration project. Those are. Somebody.
Marielle, mute yourself.
Yes, and, yeah. I assume Dayton, that we have to get permission from the state, for instance, if it's, if it's, if this project is in the right of way. If we wanted to do a temporary uh, crosswalk, for instance, uh, just, just uh, south of the intersection of um, Bean Hill, for instance.
Uh, great, well, you have to get permission if you don't want to get in trouble and you want it to be illegal. I mean, you could just do it, but, you know, there could be problems there.
Did they do it in LA or something just recently?
Well, there, there have been those renegade um, uh, projects that have, you know, you wake up one morning and there's a crosswalk painted on, on the, and it, it serves the same function although you get in trouble uh, with, with the state and we don't want to do that, we can avoid it.
Yeah, that's no problem.
Uh, it's not evidently uh, outrageous for us to want to approach the state and say, can we, can we do a temporary crosswalk system there at the intersection down here? And, and see how it gets utilized, try to take some, some, uh, create some data that shows that it functions a, as we hope it will, since there's already a sidewalk there. Uh, maybe a caution light even of some kind, I don't know, I don't know what the.
We still be doing that for like three weeks.
Well, even so, and maybe if it's there, maybe if it's there, more people will use it. How do the people?
I don't see that many people walking from the senior housing to the store. On a daily basis, yeah.
I know, my, my wife walks down there with kids, Dayton. But they use the sidewalk where they walk on John's lawn. My kids love walking across his lawn. I mean, but it's just, it's fine, we've got that alleyway there, you know, with this very solemn uh, all full up with cars.
The, the parking area, right?
Yeah, the parking lane there, right beside the traffic.
Yeah, well, point being that we, we, there's room for us to resolve it in a variety of ways rather than, than, than the sidewalk that, that was so, so kind of. Uh, and, and, and it depends, and a lot of this does depend on, on the cost factor. Uh, whether we can get uh, grant funding to do some of these things. Uh, it may take us five years to come up with the right solution and the funding to uh, to, to make it happen. And you will be a part of that, that decision, so, yeah, yeah.
Like the, the Village Green stuff, everything I've seen there looks awesome, what you want to do, you know, the pavilions, the.
Yeah, that looks.
That, that looks great.
Yeah, and that's been.
If, if the sidewalk that we had is maintained, I, I think that could be.
Yeah, that's right, I agree.
There's other areas that I think would benefit more from adding a sidewalk rather than putting sidewalk both sides.
Hmm.
Uh, especially from Red Sky uh, down through around, you know, where our hotels are. Headed north, uh, there's always people walking through there, bicycles.
Oh, down, head north. Yeah, and in fact, uh, I'm told that there actually once was a sidewalk there.
I believe past the storage shed there, that's town property, right?
Yes, it is.
On the bank?
Yes.
It'd be, it.
You could build.
I don't know how much it really costs, but to cut it out a little, put a sidewalk there.
Yeah, or build a, build a boardwalk.
Or a boardwalk or whatever.
Yeah, exactly. So here again, just a thought, that's exactly what we're looking for, is the outside the box kinds of ideas that help us resolve this whole issue and, and yes, that lower part of the village is inaccessible because it's, it narrows down so much, um.
Like, like John said too, as far as, you know, other places that use the money, right in front of your place, there's a prime spot.
Hmm.
Right, I don't know, I, I go up through there all the time, probably seventy percent of the time I go through there. I'm going around, people walk in, just like Shadow Lake Road. Neither one of them have a sidewalk. Shadow, Shadow is way west.
Right.
Pedestrian traffic, but I mean, and just, you know, we already have one sidewalk, if we could maintain that. And like I said, the green, I think that's an awesome plan, everything I've seen, I've seen a couple of different versions of it.
Right, and there've been things that, you know, that's gone through a process too. With, with Pat Russell had some objections to some of the things that we had planned. Uh, Sylvia had some, some uh, ideas that she thought would be better for uh, the, where the pavilion, if we do a pavilion, might go rather than right next to her house. It, it's, yeah, here again, we're going to be having meetings, monthly meetings anyway, into the future, and you're going to be welcome to come and participate in those meetings. We're not always going to be just talking about the plan, but there'll be a part of the meeting that will talk about the plan. And those minutes from those meetings will be posted on, uh, on the website. And um, if you, if you have a, a comment, let me know. And Jessica or Cindy know and it'll get back to me, so um, yeah, it's, it's an open uh, format as far as getting, getting your, your feedback and, and we want that. So, anything else that people have comments on with the, with current plan?
I know Randy, I didn't mention you, but I'll mention it to the group and, and specifically um, Dayton. If you could look at page twenty of the plan, which is the parking area across, in, in front of couriers and across from couriers. Uh, I'm the owner of the um, driveway that is proposed in the plan to be closed off. Uh, yet there's no alternative for how I would access my property via a driveway. So I think it says uh, closed dual-use or shared-use driveway. Um, that's my biggest objection, secondary um, would be the sidewalks, but the biggest thing is losing my driveway. And I had mentioned it to Randy years ago and I have some pictures going back to the seventies. There is a second curb cut on my property from Route sixteen for a, a second driveway that um, borders the very northern, between mine and John's. It's, it's a driveway that comes up to uh, used to walk beside the side of my house um, until the addition was put on in seventy-seven. So, um, there's no mention of that uh, curb being there. So I don't know what particular maps were used, but I can also tell you that the, if it's the tax maps that have the uh, kind of the rough property bound, boundaries, those property boundaries are extremely rough. Um, it's, it's not at all accurate, delineating the property lines between myself and the busy bee property line. I think it's close to John's, I think that's fine, but that, that small, very small uh, parcel that the busy bee sits on is shifted on the tax map for some reason. Uh, like about twenty-five feet out of whack, and while that may not be a big thing, when it's such a small parcel of property in such a tight area, um, that, that has a great effect. So when, when somebody comes out of the busy bee to use the bathroom, they actually are walking on my property and the uh, the, the rain dripping off the back roof is dripping on my property, that's how tight the property line is there. So, but the main thing is the driveway, um, and the, the proposed uh, closure of my driveway for the sake of what amounts to maybe two to three parking spaces. Um, that, that I strongly object to, uh, because I, that would landlocked my property, I have no other way to access it. Except the, the small uh, 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 road front footage on Route sixteen. The other access to my property is a needed right of way that actually is a second parcel. It's, well, it's taxed the same because the property lines are contiguous, those are two separately deemed properties, so. So I, I don't really have access to um, to my property if my driveway is closed. So, that's, that's my biggest objection. And then the sidewalk, um, you know, a, a curb that would stop people from parking on my lawn would be nice, but um, but the sidewalk, if, if a crosswalk was at Dexter, um, with some type of traffic calming devices, flashing lights that activate with the push of a button or something. Um, and then the sidewalk on the west side of Route sixteen. Maybe redone, a little wider, maybe some, you know, whatever it takes, um, seems like that would be a better option to me.
Yeah, good, wonderful. That's what we want to hear. Um, any other comments from the committee or participating citizens?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, Pat Russell, just a question, you said your final plan was just being posted. Um, what site do I go to to get the final plan?
Okay, you, you came in a little late, but uh, we just discovered that this, this final uh, draft uh, and final in quotes, um, uh, is not posted on the town's website. Townofglower.com, uh, we, we need to uh, to get that uh, up again. And uh, so we'll be taking care of that this week.
Well, then we'll be able to access it there.
Yes, Pat, there's, there's a, if you can access the goo, the chat function here, um, I put a link to that plan in the chat function that you're welcome to click on, download, review at your leader, that may be the quickest way to it.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Hmm.
All right, yeah, I think I have it. Great, I'll get it from there, um.
Right.
My, my only comment would be, I, I would think the park would be your top priority. And then sidewalks and the trees and uh, rightaways and all that would come later. But it would be beautiful if we could have a park where people could enjoy, even if they had to walk on a old way to get to it. As far as funding goes, that would, that would be my first funding to go after is, is to redo the park.
Well, and that, you know, that brings up a good point. One of the things that we will be discussing i- in, in the commission meetings uh, going forward is prioritizing these projects, uh, one, to see what we want to happen sooner than later, um, but also what is fundable through various grant opportunities that we have uh, available to us, uh, some, some more than others. So it's, it's going to be a somewhat drawn out process of, of making that decision, honing it down to a, a smaller list of, of very doable things. And uh, certainly, things are happening on the green. Once we, once we actually, the town actually owns the green, that's, I don't know if you guys are aware. That's been an issue, um, but uh, we're zeroing in on that aspect of it as well. And um, but the, the green certainly has been the major focus of what we do. Other things along Route sixteen, uh, we're, we're, we're trying to make uh, improvements that, uh, that help us all, so um, don't feel picked on. Yeah.
Good, I'm gonna go get my second beer.
Okay, thank you Jay for coming. Um, okay, any other, any other comments? Thank you, thank you Pat, thank you.
I guess I just wondered both from Pat and the residents on sixteen if uh, i- if there were any concerns that they would like to see addressed about, for example, parking and or speeding uh, highway speeds, uh, to, to address it. I, I understand the, the con, potential conflict of a sidewalk with um, you know, access and uh, historical property lines, but I'm just wondering their thoughts on uh, the, the other aspects of the plan to address, uh, you know, making it safer, I guess.
I'll, I'll speak a little over that from my point of view, um, uh, from, from previous employment. Um, I know what the issues were alleged to have in town, but I can tell you literally living in the center of town and you don't get any more centered than, than me. Um, some of the issues, um, I, I thought were unfounded, uh, I think that uh, speeding on the ends of town, for example, when you come down the hill by Still Hill, um, or as you come into town on the other end. We had uh, the first then, that I have seen in, I don't know how many years, was house, um, or actually at the, in front of Jim Courier's house. And it had nothing to do with uh, speeding or anything, it had to do with the car making a turn, uh, in front of another car, so. Um, and the roads were that, but that's the first accident that I have seen in town in years, years. Um, close calls at times with couriers and backing out, so I think parking is an issue. But I'm not sure that it's gonna, I'm not sure that, that shy of uh, you know, maybe demolishing the apartment house and putting parking lot in for couriers would, would really, as much as they can do. They, they have angle parking or, or face-in parking now, and the plans call for the exact same thing except maybe a little bit more delineation of parking spaces, so.
Actually putting, putting lanes, yeah.
Putting, putting actual parking, face-in parking spaces um, in that area. So uh, the speeding, from my perspective, there is some, there's some, but I don't think it was the problem that it was um, that it was cracked up to be when the complaint was made to the select board um, some time ago. Uh, I know from the sheriff's department perspective, when I was there, we addressed it, we addressed it well, uh, I feel we did. Um, I don't know that it's uh, addressed as much now as it was. Um, up until last fall, I did see a frequency of, of law enforcement in town, but, but I don't see that anywhere near what I used to, but don't know, uh, that's, that's another issue. Um, the biggest thing for me, again, being central to the town, is parking. Um, in the winter, when I plow the driveway and kind of keep the snow pushed across my lawn, that becomes a default parking area for the busy bee or couriers or whatever. So, um, you know, a fix of even just a curb, just a six-inch curb or whatever, to delineate the edge of the road from green space, you know, along, um, I'd love that. That would perhaps help with some of the water drainage that comes down and uh, goes to the storm drain and so forth. But uh, um, I think the plan at one point, and, and I don't recall, called for perhaps some islands. Very similar to what's on Route two in Dango, uh, at the north and south end of the town.
Correct.
Uh, I'm not so sure that that would bottleneck, um.
Yeah.
Too much with the slow traffic down, probably, but I, I'm thinking that that would be a, too much of a bottleneck, especially with larger vehicles, tractor trailers that do, that do come through town, we still get some granite truck traffic. Um, not like we did in the old days, but uh, or, you know, twenty, thirty years ago, but there's still some granite truck traffic. Um, so I, I, I don't re- really recall seeing anything else that uh, that I thought was, was great, um, you know, maybe some, some decorative stuff would be fine, the lights and, and.
Right.
You know, having the decorative banners and stuff, but those are a third, fourth, fifth priority down the road.
Right.
Um, but as far as, as far as the, the main drag through town proper, um, I don't know, I think some of the problems that they, that have been alleged are uh, maybe not quite as bad.
Okay, all right, good to hear.
Yes.
I agree with them.
I don't want to be the only one if I'm told.
I just, you know, I I mean, I said, I said at the farmer's market on Sundays and uh and maybe it's worse on weekends, I don't know. But there are, there are a goodly number of people, especially coming down the hill into the village. Uh, even though they've gone past the speed monitor sign a- out there. Um, even groups of twenty motorcycles coming through at forty-five miles an hour or whatever. Uh, that's and. There are noise issues when when people are slowing down, coming down the hill. Uh, yeah, we've gotten a lot of different comments about those issues as well. But, you know, maybe there are other things that we can, we can, and maybe it's not that big of a problem, as you're pointing out. Uh, that we don't need to put time and energy and money into something that that is is not that big of a problem. It occasionally happens. We've all, now that the school buses are not coming outside couriers anymore. Uh, that that makes a big difference in in my fears of some calamity happening right there at at couriers. Uh, but uh, yeah.
Just just a thought, when you know, you say groups of motorcycles, as somebody who's driven a lot of loud vehicles. If you're driving something loud, people assume you're going fast, just because it's loud. I was just, I I've I've had more people waving their arms at me and I'm doing thirty-five in a thirty-five.
Yeah.
And then I go through there in my quiet vehicle and do forty-five and they smile and wave. I'm thirty-five in something loud.
Yeah.
Motorcycle truck, whatever. Just, just, just a thought with that hill, especially because you're coming down that hill on a motorcycle. You're gonna be downshift and it's gonna be loud. And then the 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 speed things, I know I've heard more and more persons say, well, if you go over fifty, it doesn't flash. Then my kids don't yell at me in the backseat. I've heard that comment in couriers more than once, I've heard it.
Oh, yeah, right.
I I will add to that, that absolutely perception is a huge issue with that, so. The perception is is that they're coming down through there fast and and I've been part of traffic studies in this very town. Where we've where we've monitored traffic. I will say that those those speed signs were probably one of the best things to have to add, because I think it did slow people down.
Yeah.
Did it slow everybody down? No, but I I think even if it, even if it slowed them down from fifty-five to forty-five or to forty. It's still better than coming down that hill at fifty-five.
Yeah, no question.
I do think perception is.
Yeah.
Is is a huge thing.
Okay, great.
Hey, Randy.
Yeah, go ahead.
When's the last time we've had a traffic study done in town? I I'm assuming AOT is gonna want one done anyways, I believe the select board has to request it.
I I don't know, Brian's here and I don't know if he knows the answer to that. Off the top of my head, we may have done maybe two, three years ago. Um, but I'm not, I'm not sure and I don't know, even if there was a report, but um. You know, if that's something that. I can certainly bring it up, but if that's something that is gonna have an outcome that's gonna be favorable to making decisions for the planning commission. Yeah, and who does that? Is that is that something the sheriff does or or is that something that Vtrans does? Well, uh, Vtrans does, if you've seen the um, the cord that goes across the road.
Sure. They were, they sold them. They were, they did one a couple of years ago, a year or two ago, right up here.
Yeah, I can't.
Vtrans brought the uh speed cart with the uh traffic monitor.
Oh, that's right, yeah, so we may want to go back and.
No, that was just a sign for public testing last year.
So, okay, all right, good. Any other comments, questions?
Um, Randy, do we have a sign? Um, coming from the south end into Glover before you hit that hill that. Says something like, welcome to Glover or anything like that? Just wondering if sometimes when I know I'm coming near a village, I'm just apt to slow down anyway, but. You know, something to kind of bring a little more attention, be it noise or speed, you know, it. Both is kind of disrupting, I know you can't stop it, but um, you know, mitigate it a little.
Well, we actually have discussed that uh at at various uh meetings. It it has uh come up that that we could put a more prominent sign on both ends of of Route sixteen. Uh, that alert people that they're coming into the village, uh, both as a welcoming thing, but also as as an alert that they're. Um, they need to pay attention to their their speed. Uh, but so that's that's certainly as part of the uh suggestions uh going forward. That is also on the select board's radar, um, in that I believe the current welcome signs. And I think you're right, Carmella, I guess there should be one on the north end of Glover, but I think they were created during the bicentennial.
They were seventy-six.
Nineteen seventy-six, so perhaps they might need an upgrade.
Yeah, they look as old as the town.
Okay, great.
Bill just kind of pointed it out. The all three of us live right in the village, never really had any major complaints about noise. I mean, you're, you're, you're used to a lot quieter space in general than we are.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so you know, you come from the outside in, it seems loud, but it's just kind of the normal village rumble.
Right, well, and and my experience primarily these days for the last four years has been at the farmer's market on Sundays. And again, that's that's somewhat of a different crowd than than the day to day stuff as well, especially in the summertime.
Oh, yeah, you know, hot sunny day and groups of motorcycles and everything else.
That's right.
But there again.
And we want their business, so.
They're they're loud, so they seem like they're going fast.
Yeah, 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 got to, got to duly noted.
And I'm just, just my opinion.
No.
I I I I don't.
Good.
The thing I notice is the random kid doing a donut at the intersection at ten o'clock at night or something like that once in a while. I don't even hear a semi come through with the brake on anymore, I don't even notice it.
Wow.
It's part of living in the village.
Yeah, okay. Maybe it's not an issue. Cause you're the guys that we're trying to, trying to, you know. Not a piece, but we're trying to to make things as good as we can for it, so.
I I have a question about maintenance.
Yeah.
Snow removal.
Yes.
Of proposed sidewalks, is that, are you going to just attempt to hire another employee to maintain the sidewalks?
We've done a preliminary study of that, and in fact, given um the equipment that we would need, which would be a small tractor type.
Right.
That the uh that we do have enough employees to be able to pull off actually plowing the sidewalk.
Okay.
Well, it's not something that we have in stone right now, but we have certainly discussed. Um, what is it that would be the most efficient way to remove snow so people could walk four seasons out of the year in downtown Glover?
I noticed, I mean, the people are growing still can, they're straight for me, they were. First they piled, there's no place to put the snow as it is.
Right.
You know, so they're out there shoveling through the snowbank that the state truck could put on their parking spot. They're parking on the sidewalk uh in front of their house.
I tried to walk from here to couriers, must have been a month ago, and I had to walk over an ice hill. And um, almost fell on my ass and I realized, this just isn't right, right? We can do better than this.
My wife and three-year-old, the ten-year-old walked to the school almost every day in the summertime from basically the nursing home.
Yeah.
Not nursing home, but senior house.
Senior house, yeah.
I will, we're we're at.
Besides, I'd love to have, you know, the old sidewalks, I'm just saying it isn't, it isn't impossible to get.
Well, we have people that are probably have noticed are getting older and uh they're not, you know, they like to be able to still walk around and exercise. And so, you know, we gotta look at the whole enchilada.
Yeah.
Aside from the plan, maybe more of a suggestion to the select one, but. A sidewalk on me, you know, up to the school drive would be nice, or even the town parks office. I walked over two weeks ago to register the dogs and uh on the way over, um. I I don't remember if the vehicle stopped and let me cross the bridge, or if I stopped and the vehicle come first, but then on the way back, we had to crash the puddle, so. But that's that's, you know, there's a fire station, which they have been those there every now and.
Yeah, I agree, that's.
Something something up there, that's even aside from anything in the downtown revitalization plan.
No.
That would just be a common sense thing.
That is actually, that I would discuss as well. And I would encourage you to look at the town plan, which is also on the website, and I'm gonna be posting, you know, consolidation of that plan, so it's a little more digestible. But there's certainly plenty of argument to make um the town of Glover in the plan be more pedestrian friendly. And and to be more connected for business, so that people don't have to park right in front of, you know, a business to be able to go. Then have to go get in their car and go to another business. So uh, yeah, that's, we're certainly trying to work on that. We've even talked about, again, doing a boardwalk outside the bridge so that you can, you know, that that might be. Without having to do major construction on the bridge itself. So that has been discussed, good, good point, though. Yeah. All righty, anything else anyone has to uh?
Hey, could I just add a couple of quick things, seeing as how we've been talking about downtown? It would be, it would be nice if a downtown, I I think when you go through a town, when you come into a town, Glover is unfortunate because. Glover is on a main thoroughfare and it doesn't have a main street. The main street happens to be the main route for fast-moving traffic. But I do know when you go through some of the other towns that are in the same position, they start at the outside edge. And that's where they start putting in streetlights with the banners on them. That notify people coming into town that this is a village, that it is the main street of the village. And Glover, basically, you've got a couple of lights down by couriers and then you've got the one that I pay for in front of Union House. And other than that, we we really don't have any main street lights. That's one thing we could think about. The other thing is, I do know years ago, the sidewalk between Union and couriers. Used to be plowed, they had a little yellow tractor with a snowplow mower on the front of it. And the old guy across the street used to blow that every time we had a storm, so you could get down through there. I don't know whatever happened, if that was a deal with the town or if it was just something that he liked to do. But I do know that it's very hard. Um, usually there's anywhere from five to ten employees that go back and forth to get their lunches and go to Jimmy's. And then the wintertime, even some of the patients like to go, but you have to wait for a good day and then push them down the main road.
Right.
And that's that's not safe. And it's not something that we should do when we have already have a nice sidewalk from the church down. Uh, that could be kept open. Um, he used to keep it open and maybe the town needs to invest in, you know, having that. Snow blow by somebody in the wintertime.
Right, and I think the the sidewalk, I think we determined that the sidewalk is just barely in the uh Btrans right of way. Um, so that, uh, not that that would keep us from from clearing it, but to upgrade it. So that it's it's uh especially in places like in front of Sylvia's house. Um, it's not really navigable, uh, it's it's been sunk down so much that it would be hard to keep it uh. So that people could walk on it. Uh, we need to get permission to do an upgrade uh anywhere on that on that sidewalk.
Mm-hmm. Just a couple of thoughts.
Yeah.
Randy, I really do like her idea of street lighting if if, you know, I don't know if we could get Velco on board with it or something, but. Uh, kinda talking out of turn, it it would affect those that live in town more than those of us that drive through it. But I think that that would bring some some good awareness into the village.
Right, and again, that has been, that has been on the table uh as a suggestion and uh we we think it's a good one, so. Um. That's certainly uh in the midst. Okay. Anything else? Well, good, we're we're um right on schedule here. Uh, so uh, I will um. Uh, say that anyone who would like to come to our regular meetings, we will be posting them. Uh, on on the town's calendar, website calendar. And uh, if you miss a meeting, uh, you can, you can look at the minutes uh again on on the town's website. So you can still make comments to us uh after the fact.
Randy, Randy, it's Marielle. Um, I just wanted to thank Dayton and your your crew for being so. Uh, for pursuing, pers- persevering with us. Um. It's been a pleasure, thank you.
Well, thank you for that, it's been a pleasure working with you guys and um we'll definitely um continue to stay tuned and support as we can. And um, I think we'll we'll look at that last update coming out shortly. And I think, you know, this conversation is exactly why you do these plans, right? It's a very small town investment to do a planning process like this, which helps you understand if you should have sidewalk, where you should have sidewalk, how it could get plowed. Whether the sidewalk or a park is a priority, so thanks to everybody in Glover for being part of the process and um we'll be in touch soon.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, bye, guys.
All right, thank you, and and anybody else's uh um information. We we will be, uh, the town uh will be doing a uh, an assessment of the the. Uh, financials of the of what has gone down here with the with the plan. Uh, we will uh be putting out uh as much information as we can about what will be happening in the future. Uh, we will um try to keep you posted uh to the public and again. Pass this information along to to your neighbors and friends and and not not just people that live in the village. We want everybody's uh, everybody's input uh going forward. All righty, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Dave.
All right.
Thank you.